This time we'll call it a January 26, 2021, meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. We welcome Kelly and Teresa from KMAQ and the Macocota Sentinel Press. Supervisors Lera McDavitt, Mike Steinis, and myself, Jack Willie. Our illustrious auditor, Lisa Smith, Administrative Assistant, Luanne Goke. And first item on our agenda today is our reply to the Teamster Union Local Number 120. Contract.
So today we present our initial bargaining proposal, which is a response to the proposal. Teamsters presented two weeks ago. And the county's first offer is Article 16, Hours of Work, which includes compensatory time. The county offers 80 hours of compensatory time at any time within any fiscal year. It shall be used by November 1st of each county. Article 18, Wage Administration, the county offers a 3% increase for each of the three years of the contract. Article 20, Duration of Agreement, the county proposes a three-year agreement to begin on July 1st of 2021. And shall remain in force through June 30th of 2024. And that's all we have for you.
Okay, well, that'll work. I appreciate your time and I'll go over it with the guys. And then I'll get back with you Becky and we'll set a date.
Thank you, John.
Drive safe.
And I'll be back later.
We'll look forward to it.
He'll take it back to his representatives and determine if they want to set an in-person negotiation session. I let them know we can do it by his.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is David Dreyer, our Jackson County Engineer.
Morning, David.
Morning.
Morning.
Today I'm on the agenda as the Rockbit. And I have a sheet for you to keep track.
We're just wanting to. Easily. What comes in, don't you?
She hasn't asked him. Thank you. So the first bid that I have this morning that I've opened up is from River City Stone. They bid a unit price of $6.95 per ton for the Bernard and the Ruby Quarry.
695.
695. The second one I have is from Wendling Quarries. So for the Delmer, Preston, and Wies Quarry, their unit price is $5.85 per ton.
Okay, could you repeat them, Delmer, Preston?
Preston and Wies. $5.85 per ton. Eden Valley, Frost, Macocota, $7.75 a ton.
Okay, Eden Valley.
Valley, Frost, Macocota, 7.75 a ton. Andrew, oh, excuse me, $7.25 a ton for Andrew, Orange Door, Bellevue, Decker, Iron Hill, Joinerville, Rowan, Tees Grove. I think that should include all for Wendling Quarries.
None for, I don't have any for Frank or for Castle. Okay, they didn't have anybody.
They haven't worked for a couple of years. Was the Wies Quarry 585?
585. So Delmer, Preston, and Wies were all 585. Bellevue Sand and Gravel. $4.94 per ton for the Spring Brook Quarry. $6.70 a ton for Bellevue, Lamont, Moorhead, Saint and Aegis Beach.
675.
670.
$6.70. So this is Preston Reddymess. Elwood Jaeger, Johnson's, and Grant's is $6.75 a ton. 675 for Elwood, Johnson, and Grant's. And that's all what they did.
Okay. Now you can do your calculations and come back to us.
Hey, we have a possible action on resolutions. The first one up is the sign policy, which you should have in your package. It's basically an update of the previous sign policy where we would review our signs. We have an inventory of all the locations. It would be manually inspected and identified for replacement. The policy has been updated to use a more scientific process of reviewing signs using a retroreflectometer, which is a handheld gun that you place on the sign face and fires a light at it and measures the amount of light returned to it. Based on recommendations from Federal Highway can identify which signs need to be replaced. Basically, it prevents it from removing signs too early. You can get some more light out of them. Realistically, though, a sign looks pretty poor that you will identify it by eye for replacement. There may still be some, you know, technical light left, but it's pretty, pretty worn out. But it just provides better mechanism for.
I would like a motion to approve the sign policy resolution as presented.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the sign policy resolution. Okay, I was going to say, is there any? Just give me a chance.
I didn't know.
Do you have any?
Yeah, so the, the sign policy itself, when I read it, it wasn't really anything highlighted. So the minor changes that were made according to your expertise and your.
Was the addition of the retroreflectometer.
Yeah, right.
Opposed to a more of a manual method, which is still an approved. There are several ways you can do a sign inventory for federal highway. You can do it, you can take a senior citizen out at night and train them on how to review signs using their vision as opposed to a 20-something and identify signs that are failing that way.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm getting, what I was getting at is as far as it's up to the road to pretend or the supervisor to see if it's an emergency to place, place cones or anything.
Well, stop signs and yield signs.
Yeah, have to be done.
Yeah, and as soon as possible, so we can get a crew out there. All other signs basically kind of a ad, not an ad hoc, but as you will base this, there may be some warning signs that we consider a little more critical than others. Who would get out there sooner than later.
Okay. Do we ever do any, like washing the signs for maintenance?
We did in Florida. I don't think we do that here.
I've never really heard they did that.
I mean, if you came up and Fitzroy Dusty or something, that would make a difference on how.
Sure, absolutely. If they're, if they're measuring it, they will, will clean it, clear it off.
Remember seeing that in Germany and they go down, they had a bunch of people on the back of truck and one was washing and one was drying and wiping as they drove down the highways.
I'll tell you, as many signs as there are out there, it'd take a while. My goodness. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
All right, the second item on the agenda is the drug and alcohol testing policy. That was on the last week's agenda and we refer it to the scenes for some clarification. Those areas were highlighted largely the most significant addition is the Federal Clearing House Edition, which takes previous employers out of the booth where we weren't getting very good responses on whether people we were considering for employment had any CDL-related issues. So that in itself is a, is a good thing.
Motion to approve that.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
The other possible resolution is the Nashville Vacation, which was on a previous agenda, but there were some questions about the best way to describe these parcels. We worked with Lisa to, to kind of lock these two parcels down. And that has been, been done. So we're ready to set the date for the public hearing and send out the notices.
You're suggesting September 6th or February 16th?
I believe that is correct.
Motion to approve.
At nine o'clock?
To set the public hearing.
We have a motion to set the public hearing for February 16th at nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, motion carried.
Next item up on the agenda is a memorandum of understanding, basically quantifying the value of the barn space that the county allows secondary rows to use above Y61. And this basically formalizes that to a value of $2,400 per year of services that secondary growth would be able to, to work with the county on providing services. Any questions on this one?
Hey, I mean, do we just, when we talked about excluding that portion, so just so we knew that that portion would.
Yes.
And I know Marty has a few items, a lawnmower or two in the other portion too. So I guess that's just a clear understanding, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah, he has a trailer sitting upon our trailer.
Yeah.
Yeah, not just very valuable things, but not Marty.
No, and I did, I did ask Sarah about it. She had no issues with it. I would make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
We got two runaway utility permits for you today. Windstream Communications installing fiber optic cable alongside 233th Road Avenue. And recommend approval.
So much. I would second.
A motion and a second to approve the windstream communications request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And some permit from a Coqueta Valley Electrical Cooperative. Going to use some electrical work along 63rd Street in Towne to Bay Harbor North, replacing poles, anchors, guide layers.
Also approved of that, Coqueta Valley's permit they have presented.
A second. Motion and a second to approve Coqueta Valley Electric Permit. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, motion carried. Okay, thank you, sir. Sign those and bring them over to you.
Super.
Are there any undecideds or citizens that wish to address the board? Okay, we will move to Roger Chandell from Karoche.
Thank you. I went back to hear for that.
Morning, all.
I don't think we need to. Good morning, Roger.
Morning, Roger.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen of the presentation that we have for our annual review with you folks. So hopefully you can see my screen up now.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, and I'm going to run through this relatively quickly because I have limited time. So what I want to talk today about today is your on-demand training program. Our audit and management program around your HIPAA. The attestation every year, at the end of our contract, we give you materials, a document that you in fact are compliant with the regulations and those are good for a year. Then I have something called news you can use. It's some updates on what we're doing. And then our renewal with you folks is actually coming up on February 15th. So your updated Jackson County Training Report. And you can see the link here, everybody should have that. And if you want us to resend it to you, just let us know. If you're on this report as you choose, this is the report from the beginning for the current part, current trainings that are out there. We sunsetted all of our flash trainings. Adobe has sunsetted flash. We're using a new technology called HTML5. It will cut down on the number of issues that the trainees have in terms of getting their training completed and decreases the overhead required on your machines to run the training. So these trainings were launched in November and you can see our compliance rate is at 35%. For the most part, we're looking at recognizing, addressing breaches. There are more workspace, someone went ahead and took that, it wasn't assigned, but that's a nice thing to do. And then use and disclosures of protected health information, that's through the region. So for the county, we're looking at rows one and two. In total, we're at 35%, which I want to bring up this next slide. This shows your training for all of 2020. And for that, we are at a completion rate of 39.4, 39%. The best thing we can do to, to protect ourselves from having to pay fines and penalties when the never will breach occurs. You actually have one county in the region who's going through an office for civil rights investigation now on a breach that they had. One of our clients, we have no doubt they'll come through without any fines or penalties. But it should point out the fact that, that breaches are occurring and Office for Civil Rights is investigating. Again, for the year, you were 39%. Our goal is to get everybody up, all of our clients up to about 80% compliance on the training. That's the best thing we can do to, as I say, keep from having to pay fines or penalties. We have a variety of programs that we're offering. We have the on-demand training that we go ahead and do. We also are setting up additional sessions where we'll lead the training. And if need be, we'll actually come in and do group trainings for those folks who are not getting the compliance on the, on the training done.
Roger?
Yes, sir.
How accurate are they recording when you've had training? The last two times I took training, shortly thereafter, I got a reminder on my iPad that I needed to do the training. I did the training here. Luanne was here while I was doing it and it didn't indicate that I had, had done it. And that was the last two. And so how do we know this is really accurate?
Well, so the issue that you, you had in that situation, we've redesigned the courses to get rid of it. There was an ambiguity. There were two buttons in the training. One said submit and the other said next. And if you click the button next without clicking to submit, the system was not recognizing the training that had been done. That's gone away. We've redesigned the courses, so that ambiguity is gone. Typically, when that happens, we get a call and we go in, we look at the backend, make sure that the training in fact has been accomplished or completed. And then we go ahead and give credit for it, so.
Well, I know after I, after I got that report, I went, that on my email, I, I went to Becky and I said, what's the deal? I did this, the last two times I did this, and both times it said I had not, that I, I needed to by the 31st of January. And I was specific that I got it done before that. And then it said I didn't do it. And I was not happy about that.
I can certainly imagine that's, that would be very frustrating and we apologize. As I say, we redesigned the courses, so that shouldn't happen. Steph is on this call in the background. I will have her go in, take a look at what's happening with your course because that shouldn't be anymore. And let me get back with you and, and we'll get it resolved. Resolving that issue, though, is as simple as letting us know. If we know there's a problem, we can fix it, we can research it and fix it pretty quickly.
I've quite a bit on that to make sure that people that are letting me know they did it. And I've actually looked at some of the computers firsthand to see that the course has been completed. I think some of them were the ones that were completed under the prior platform but are still floating out there in their HIPAA suite. Like I'll use Jack for an example, if he had like a first quarter entity training where he was taking the next or we didn't get it submitted, it wasn't giving full credit for those courses even though they had been completed. So I think I had sent a couple screenshots to Steph and I think all of those have, the ones I know about have been updated. But if there's other ones out there, we'll have to work through those.
Sometimes it would say that you completed half of it also, and then you would go back and start it again. And there was no way of going through that completely. Yeah, it was not very friendly.
Hopefully with your redesign, that's been alleviated. So I successfully went in and did the one that was due for me. I don't know if it was due this month or next month, but I did do that under the new platform and everything went smoothly for me. So hopefully, if those issues are not resolved, we'll be sure to reach out to you. But hopefully with the next training course that comes to you, we won't have that issue.
Hopefully not, hopefully not.
Yeah.
So my question to you Becky, this 39%, you know who the individuals are that did not complete them?
Yes.
And what's our?
What's our recourse?
Well, we'll have to get with Steph on that and see. She has sent me a couple of spreadsheets that we can sort out by department and by employee. And I did communicate with some of the department heads saying your employees need to get these rectified. A large one of our percentage will be secondary rows because they have not had anything. We'll have to look at doing the on-demand or having, we kind of talked about having them come in prior to COVID and getting them all together, so we have not done that. They're probably not a huge piece of our pie that needs trained, but there is training that needs to be done there. So that would be a chunk of the percentage there if we look to secondary roads. But it's hard to keep up on every individual person that's showing that their training is not completed. So they've been really good about sending out emails. I've sent out emails, you know, if we need to physically go and hopefully we'll have a workspace available where we can have employees now come in and say you're going to train from nine to 12 on Tuesday. So that's kind of our goal here is to have that space available.
We have a room, we have a computer, we have everything necessary.
That's a good idea. We'll be certainly compliant.
Yeah.
And we'll hop on the door.
We won't let them out until it shows.
So if I can interject for a moment, our clients, whether they be counties or be private organizations, those that have the best scores in terms of training, who do get that 80%, someone in, in senior management, the county level, one of the supervisors actually takes this on as, you know, a, an exercise for them to put their shoulder behind. I understand the limitations that, that supervisors have with the department heads and whatnot. But when we can demonstrate from the top down that, that this is an important activity for people to be involved in, we, we tend to get these numbers up well past 80%. So just as, as a, as an aside, when you're asking, what can we do to get this better? Someone, the supervisors was willing to take this on and, and let it be known that this is very important through the department heads and, and down to the, to the line employees. That would, that would do a significant amount to, to move that 38% up towards an exceeding 80% completion rate.
Well, that would certainly be our hope.
And whoever that turns out to be, we're always on call to work with you. Do anything we can to facilitate the process and get the, the numbers up. Because again, not to belabor the point, it's the number one thing we can do to make sure that one will be investigated by a regulatory agency that we, we come out of that investigation without any fines or penalties.
Okay.
Okay, then moving on, audit reports. So this is where we currently stand. The process that we go through, per the regulations, to make sure that you're compliant as we do a risk assessment where we calculate what we call here the residual risk for the 103 items that are vulnerabilities that are outlined in the regulations. We then create a remediation plan, which once we've percolated up the risks, gives us a roadmap as to how to fix these, these risks or decrease the amount of risk we're carrying. And then we need to document that we are actually operating the way we said. We are in our policies and procedures, which are the ways we mitigate the risk. So this is the audit that we go through to make sure we're operating the way we say we're going to. The way we conduct this, as we do the audit, we're actually updating the risk assessment remediation plan. So we're killing three birds with one stone. So at the end of the year, you guys are in very good shape. You have a couple of items. All the residual risk is low because we've done the risk assessment, updated that, the protocol. There are two states, there's complete and incomplete on the audit. Incomplete means we're missing something that we need to, to put in place. We have eight of these high-level areas where we need to complete something to get the audit protocol to complete. I'll talk about that in a moment. It may seem like a lot, but you're well ahead of most everybody else in the industry. You're in the top 5% in terms of.
Roger, these ones that are showing incomplete here are not ones. So these are just ones that we have not worked through together on these, right? You're not in need of anything from Bjorn and I, we just haven't worked through these together.
That's correct, and there may be a couple. I'd have to go back and look where we need to get a log from you that we can review. But these will all be resolved as we go through into this next year and continue the audit and updating the risk assessment. So it's broken down to security, privacy, and breach. This is the security part. This is the privacy part, and this is the breach part. Our goal or our plan is during this first quarter of 2021 is to go through and make sure that we can complete the audit protocols on those outstanding items. And then the rest of them where we've already on those outstanding items, and then the rest of them where we've already have a complete audit protocol. We go through them again, update the risk assessment, remediation plan, the audit. And it's a continual process, and we break that down into quarterly chunks. So I did attach the whole report to the documents, the materials we passed out. But you're in good shape on this. I'm not losing sleep that if we have a breach, we're gonna end up with fines and penalties. It's typical to have a few of these things lagging out there that need to be completed. So you have the full report you can go through. Basically, I just wanted to point out the the items that, you know, we need and what we scheduled moving into the next year to work on. Any questions on that? Okay?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Okay. So now we have the attestation materials that we provide you the end of the year. The first is a certificate of attestation. And I think I need to do a different share. I've done this for a moment. Share, share my screen. Oh, you should see the certificate now, yes?
Yep, it's there.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and close that off. So you got that, that's in the package, and it has the seal that we give you. Then we have a letter that you should be seeing the letter now. It's an opinion letter on your compliance under the regulations. And it talks about what we've done, what the requirements are, that you have gone through all the steps required to become competent, that you're in compliance with the regulations. And then it talks about all the different areas that we go through. This is required under the regulations. Then at the bottom, there are areas that aren't part of the regulations but are are deemed to be important in the industry. Things like fraud and abuse, use of mobile devices. The problem we have is the regulations are a political document, they don't stay up to date. They're going through revision now, so during twenty twenty-one, we may see some changes to this. So hopefully, that came up on your screen. And then we have the audit report. This is what I just went over with you. But this is the full report, talks about what we're required to do and what we have done, and where you stand on these, and and some references if you want to go look at, you know, the the source materials while we work off of. So there's that. So the next news you can use. So cybersecurity is always a problem people face. We've gone ahead and partnered with a company called Know Before. They're an industry state-of-the-art cybersecurity training platform. So the services we can provide now include a quarterly email test to test their cyber, play cybersecurity knowledge, respond, how to respond to potentially infected emails, and we track those. Employees would receive training on how to identify potential attacks and periodic security reminders, which were required under the HIPAA regulations. And then quarterly management reports on the state of cybersecurity as delivered to the manager's desktop. So as we move through the year, we're going to come back and talk to you about this in detail. We're actually beta testing it with a couple of our clients right now. And as soon as we have the results of that testing, we'll be back and and talking to you about it. I will tell you where we're pricing it, is we're pricing it as if you're going out to get the service on your own. As a reseller, we get a nominal discount, so that's the margin that we get. But we basically sell it as, again, at the price that it'll cost you plus taking on all the all the management. So this will be coming down the road. Just wanted to kind of put it on your radar. It's something to think about. Cybersecurity attacks, cyber attacks are proliferating at a geometric rate. It's something we all need to be more concerned about than we did a few years ago. And by partnering with Know Before, we think we have a good platform. I think the industry would would agree it's a good platform to work on the cybersecurity. So we'll be back with you folks on this during the year. Then we have our renewal. The renewal date is February fifteenth. Your current service is HIPAA Select. The cost doesn't change from last year. Here is a copy of the letter, of which you have a clean copy. Basically states that while we signed up, we signed you up as a client in November, we didn't get the project going until February, and that's what we we tagged the renewal date to. Talks about what we've done today. We've updated the security and privacy risk assessments, updated remediation plans, have been conducting training. We get support calls that we work on. We are working on the management audit program, which we went over. As part of the audit management program, as soon as the the county opens up a bit more, we're going to schedule meetings with the department heads to validate that what we're doing fits their needs, and we're on the same page. That's part of the audit. And as you saw in the in the schedule for the audit, we'll be scheduling those Q one through Q four to get those done. We actually had planned on on coming out next week to go ahead and do those. I believe Steph is still working on scheduling with the department heads to come out and visit with them one-on-one to get this part of the process going. And then we are continuing to work on business associates and vetting them to make sure they're complying with the regulations and make sure that we have business associate agreements in place as needed. Next year, we're going to continue basically on the same tasks. This is an ongoing process. We would put a a more robust effort into getting the training up, and we'll talk to you about that forward. And again, because you're part of the region, we give you a credit memo back of four hundred and twenty dollars to account for travel. So we end up not billing you for travel expenses as we come out and visit you at the region. So that is what we have. You have a clean copy of this in front of you, and that's my story, so I'm sticking to. Any questions?
No.
Very good.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
So Jack actually has a copy of the renewal in front of him, if all is well. I would ask for a motion to approve the contract renewal with Corrosed Compliance Solutions and authorize the chair to sign.
Smooth.
Second. A motion and a second to approve and authorize the chair to sign. Is there any further discussion?
How does it compare to last year's contract?
Same.
Thanks. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And Roger, I will connect with Steph about some of the outstanding trainings and to work on having you guys come in to do your departmental visits.
Yeah, let's make sure we resolve any outstanding training issues. I thought they'd all gone away as we sunset of the old courses, but we'll circle back to that and make sure we've covered all those bases.
Yeah, one thing I'll need to talk to Steph about maybe is some of the was it the oh, let's see. Maybe like the tutorials that haven't been completed, which end result brings our training numbers down and those kind of things.
You know, forwarded this year, those will all be sunsetted off, so the training numbers should percolate up because those kinds of introductory have gone away.
Okay, okay, so I will work.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. We'll always look forward to working with you.
Roger, I mean.
Some of these are individually to each individual or department, so we're not taking all of them. Like Bjorn said, he has something to take now. I didn't see any emails. We will get personal emails.
Every time you have a training, you will come to you personally.
That's right.
Jack gets an email, it doesn't apply to you.
Unless you want to take it.
Don't send any more than you have.
You're always able to take as many as you'd like.
What a guy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Roger. Okay, next on the agenda is Jackson County Sheriff Brent Kilburg.
Good morning.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, sir.
So I would like to approach the board with a couple things this morning. First being, I would like to revoke Chief Deputy Cracker's appointments or to be good to Chief Deputy. I realize in my operational plan going forward in the future, I I kind of missed a step. I'd like him to be covered under civil service. So with his revocation, I would ask that I can appoint him as a deputy off of the civil service list. And then I would turn right around and promote him back to chief deputy, basically in the same stroke again, so.
Can it be done in one?
Separate motions.
There's the revocation on top, that, and it goes deputy to chief deputy.
We have to do the revocation separate, and that has to be first.
We need that in a motion?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, I would make that motion. I would second.
We have a motion and a second to a revocation of the appointment of James Croker as the chief deputy. All those in favor? Motion carried. Now you want us to appoint him as a deputy?
I would so move to appoint a second.
A motion and a second to appoint James Croker as a deputy of Jackson County Sheriff's Department. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, motion carried. Okay. And this would be to appoint him chief deputy?
Yes. Make a motion to appoint Chief Deputy.
Oh, it's second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to to appoint Jim as the chief deputy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Those are done.
Okay. The next order of business I have is just some personnel. So Melissa Schmidt is going to be the deputy that we offered the road position to to work patrol for us. And then Thomas or TJ Allen is the deputy that we've made a conditional off, and all these are conditional officer offers. He is the one that we're putting in the courthouse security position here. And then Stephen Thayer is agreed to work part-time for us to fill the part-time opening that we have for the sheriff's control division also. And like I said, those are all conditional offers, still pending some things to get finished up, but they've all accepted the offer, so.
Mr. Thayer is a person that's working in person right now?
Yes, yep. Yeah, he's their full-time officer. I guess I should, yeah, so.
Okay, so you you.
And so you're wanting us to approve this contingent on them fitting out, finishing, finishing out the rest of the tests and all of that stuff that they have to do?
So there's actually no approval on the board today.
Okay.
You know, conditional offer has been made, hopefully next week, every, all the process, the personnel items will be completed and you can present your certificate.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, sorry, that's my bad. Figure this out.
Okay.
It's just an FYI.
I get it, so I just want, can I ask? Mrs. Schmidt is currently a police officer in Bellevue, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Mr. Allen, is that what you said?
Yep, TJ Allen.
And he's currently.
He was on Marion P D, I believe, if I got that right, yeah. Yeah, yep.
And are these both off the current?
Civil service.
Civil service. So what what do we have left on the civil service?
So Stephen Thayer is also on the civil service list, but he is a part-timer, or he's going to work the part-time position for us, stay full-time at Preston, and then work part-time for us. And then Mel Kenyon is still on the list. She's not a certified officer though, but she is still on our list.
Okay.
Okay.
And the only other thing I guess I had for business was, I wanted to just let you guys know that I've decided to make the part-time deputy pay twenty-two fifty an hour. And that's been discussed with Stephen Thayer, and so he's aware of that. And also I would like to change it to where, just because someone's working for us part-time, they don't actually start seniority with us until they potentially become full-time. So then their seniority starts at that time for pay purposes and step periods in their their paid two years.
Okay. But if they were in another position, like full-time somewhere else, that could also come into play as years of service if we did, so.
Yeah, I would say if they're full-time for us, then their seniority starts then, yeah.
What if they're full-time somewhere else and come in?
With the county, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, the way I've seen that done in the past, can I speak clearly? The way I've seen that done at other agencies anyway is your your start date is your start date. If you're a county employee, your your start date is where your start date is. So you'll retain your time in service, your IPers and all that stays the same. You may even have some benefits at crossover, like vacation. If you've worked five years, just as an example for secondary roles, whatever your vacation rate was at five years, you would transfer over to the sheriff's office at what their five-year rate of vacation rate was. However, when you come work for the sheriff's office, your rate of pay starts at the bottom. So you start with seniority and rate of pay at the bottom compared to the other deputies.
Okay, so I want to say when we adjusted this pay scale, when they were all at eighty-five percent two or three years ago, do we not have a clause in there that states, okay, let's say this person, like Melissa, if she's been a police officer for Bellevue for ten years, his first time of service can be considered as.
And Brent is saying, I'll I'll use Scott Hager for an example.
Yeah.
So Scott Hager had been with us for five years being promoted to a full-time deputy. Under Brent's, what Brent would like to see is that he started with zero years of longevity with Jackson County because he did not serve as a full-time officer. So this is not a discussion that you're going to make a decision on today. I think he was just surprising you that he's kind of working through some of the motions here with how he's worked in other departments and how he liked the structure of that, so.
But the way our pay scale structure is worded now in the in the structure, I think it's up to.
So all deputies would start at the seventy percent, which is what our policy says currently. All all incoming deputies would start there.
Well, there's a speculation in there, you could take.
If the sheriff were to recommend.
Yeah.
To the board, yes.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is like a latterly, I could bring someone in latterly if I say they've got ten years.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you hire a police officer that's been in Bellevue, or somebody that's been the chief down there or something that has years of service, that is influential.
Two separate things here, he's talking about seniority and you're talking pay. So he is saying they would still have zero seniority here, but they're maybe coming at a higher rate of pay.
All right, that's, yeah, that was confused, that part, as far as seniority goes, yeah.
So right now, our county policy is that all employees retain seniority based on their date of hire. So Scott Hager for us, under his current hire, he started here five years ago, he's he's got five years seniority with us. Brent is saying, had he been hired under his direction, he would have had zero seniority when he was appointed full-time on January second or whatever it was. And then he would have started back up.
And it makes a difference in the the way the pay scale is set up now, it makes a difference in the the percentage of the salaries, I guess, if I'm bringing somebody in.
Like Scott came in at eighty percent as a full-time employee because he had been here with us for five years.
Right, rather than starting at the seventy percent, coming in at the seventy percent rate at at the beginning, he, even though he's worked part-time, he's jumped to the eighty percent pay rate, just as his first day as a full-timer.
Well, and that still goes about the background of his background and years of service as police chief or somewhere else, you know, or his experiences, I should say.
Yeah, yeah, and I think what we're talking about there is, we might have the discretion to, you know, if there's somebody out there that's, you know, we really want this person, we want to snag, and we could bring them in at a higher level, come insert with, you know, where, where we put them at in our base scale.
Well, we sure don't want to limit ourselves, I think.
Right, that's an option.
Yeah, yeah.
And obviously, it's at your discretion.
So yeah, I can work on that and that was just kind of an FYI, I think, visiting some of those things, so.
Yeah.
There will be more discussions if we can on that.
Okay, the other item we have for you is this week we have got to at least go over
Budget.
The budget, some, some form of a budget. And we can do it tomorrow or we can do it Thursday.
Let's.
But no later than Thursday.
Yeah, I agree. Do you guys want to talk about what you're available right now or just I'll talk later if you want to know about schedules or?
We can tell you now.
Because we're close, we've just got a couple hangers out there that we got straight.
Well, and there's still time to talk about some of that too, if we can get to the better portion of it and say, well, this is a if maybe, or, you know, where we're at, so.
Yeah.
If a preliminary figures.
Yeah.
We can do it tomorrow morning, we can do it tomorrow afternoon, late, early afternoon. Larry has a Zoom meeting at three o'clock Thursday, there's a nine o'clock meeting that should last, RPA lasts about an hour, so, and then the next meeting is our state ISAC supervisors meeting by Zoom from one to three thirty. So we can either do it tomorrow before three o'clock, or we can do it Thursday, probably from ten to one.
If you want me to be here.
Thursday, you're not available.
I'm unavailable Thursday morning. I'm available Thursday afternoon.
And then Friday, we can do it, but we'd really like it before that.
And we prefer it on Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday is a really bad day for me because I've got ISAC training Wednesday and we've got some MMPI test going on that day. Thursday afternoon would work for me, or even if we could get those questions answered and punch those numbers in, even this afternoon would be a possibility, but Wednesday is a real bad day for me.
Well, you know, this afternoon could work if, like you said, like Ricky said, it's preliminary, if there's a few numbers you don't have ready yet by this afternoon, I mean, that's.
I think getting Karen's email shows the preliminary.
Yeah, we, we just got a couple of questions hanging out there that we just need somebody to say where they fall under and then we can put them there.
Well, we could, we could do it from twelve o'clock until, first thing I have this afternoon is at three o'clock, Zoom meeting for Iowa workforce. So we could do it after our meeting if you want to go back to the sheriff's office and come back later.
And if John's still coming at ten thirty, I haven't heard from him.
I have, we haven't heard from him.
So I guess I, I guess I'm assuming status quo that he's coming at this point, so I don't know what you guys, if there was any thinking about meeting with him afterwards.
Well, it's on our agenda that we can discuss the jail project, so if he does come, we can certainly talk to him about it and, and see if there's anything that we need to talk about.
I would say have Karen submit to Shelley as soon as possible, so she's got a chance to get stuff into the computer. We'll get it to the board so they've got a chance to at least look at it and then see if we have some time yet this afternoon, if possible.
Okay.
And it sounds like, honestly, it sounds like this is about it. If you're not available tomorrow at all, Wednesday, I'm not available Thursday morning, you're not available Thursday afternoon, I'm not available Friday. It kind of sounds like we need to.
Let's try to get something done today.
Good, and like I said, we're, we're just like Cobra Insurance for Cody that's hanging out there yet, we just got to figure out where that line item needs to be put in and then throw the number in there. We just got little hangers out there that we got.
We can do some things later.
Talk about it then.
Yeah.
So. Yep, we'll just need to come together and decide where that stuff needs to be, so.
Okay.
I think we're pretty much ready, it just needs to be plugged in.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Here's your certificate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we're going to be joined by Chris Meinike, Jackson County insurance agent for ICAP. Good morning.
Good morning, Chris.
Is that a happy time of the year?
I come buried a little bit of that.
We know that.
Obviously, you've seen, or last year, we have roughly a thirty-three thousand six hundred dollar increase. That basically is coming in two components. The ICAP board of directors voted not to have a vested member credit this year. Based on history, that's about twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars a year. That board.
But what if we tell them no?
They smile and say.
I know what they'd say.
That board is elected by E-folks, by the way.
I know it is. Have to see what we can do about that.
To be honest, the first I heard about it is when I was putting the numbers together and I called them and said, hey, I don't have a vested member credit. And then they explained it to me. The other factor in the increase is in two thousand nineteen and the early two thousand twenty, ICAP went through every member that has, and their baseline was any building valued at two hundred thousand and up. They did a replacement cost estimate, they're all, they came in, they hired a firm to do that. And we had, we have multiple buildings over two hundred thousand and they came in and changed some valuations. Probably the biggest one was the courthouse itself. It went from three point nine million, almost four million to seven point one million. A few buildings that went down. And didn't balance out in any way, shape or form, but it increased about a four thousand dollar increase in the property.
Chris, I've just been looking here, if you look at item number eleven for our Jackson County structure inventory, we talk about the Sterling shed. The fifty-eight thousand one fifty-eight, is that the old one or the new one?
That's going to be the old one.
The new is the very last building.
Van Buren, I think it said.
Oh.
So it's a change from Sterling to Van Buren, is that the township or what, why it was changed?
Well, it's not in Sterling anymore.
But moved a mile.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure we were covered.
Yeah, we've already had a claim on it.
Oh.
Deracial.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Been a riot, by the way.
So the ICAP board decided to invest the vested member credit in training law.
Loss control training and, and other training, or training and loss control.
Of our money, I use this.
Well. That would be how I'd put it, you know, that's, you can see the history of the vested member credit is pretty extensive. That's why I'm sure they're getting some feedback on that, but.
They should be.
It's happened in all ninety-nine counties. They did that to all ninety-nine counties.
Well, they insure about eighty-five of the ninety-nine or eighty-two, something like that. Yeah, this is not directed toward Jackson County. This is across the board.
It's a pretty big number.
Well, a two-year loss total is six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in Jackson County.
Well, we knew that would have some effect.
Well.
Which we had no say in.
It didn't hit you guys hard, it hit ICAP hard.
Yeah.
I'm sure it did.
I'm looking on page five of six here too, Chris, and some of the changes or some of the highlights that were changed. I mean, that's, it's so bold, but number eight is Andrew Jackson Care Facility was added, we were recovered.
That was been insured with another entity that rented it or leased it. So in that year, if you go back up and look at page four, it is two thousand and six, we added Andrew Jackson Care Facility back into the county's insurance program. Did it either, I don't remember if it'd been on its own or if it'd been leased by somebody and they insured the building, but came back into the county's program at that point in time.
Also, I just want you to have, to know that that barn at, on number fourteen at that barn and, and Jackson Kelly, we're actually sticking a fair amount of funds into that to repair it, if it's still standing, if we are in the process of repairing, so it probably does not need to be insured yet, but when, by the time we're finished, I would say we might want some insurance back on that, correct? I mean, you had stated at the time when we had the damage, if it was repaired, that we sure we could get, and it'll probably have to be inspected.
Yeah. But you are.
Got it, back up where it's supposed to be, standing straight, so.
Last I knew, that was just going to be passed. So who's doing that for him?
Several.
Any estimation when it will be done?
Should be fairly soon.
Oh, well, yeah, it depends what we all decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about leaning towards on the bottom for storage, it's not going to be used for cattle shedding anymore.
Okay. It was really heavily built.
Yeah. And we have a welcome center at three hundred and ninety-three thousand, is that correct?
Yes. That was one of the buildings that got reassessed.
Well, would you like to tell them, we'll sell it to them for that?
Actually, what I would like is a nickel for any time I've heard that. No. That's, I just heard about that yesterday, that's sort of like that.
I thought I had circled here also too.
Oh, the Sabila one.
Chris.
Yeah.
Was the machine shed, yeah, at, at the machine shed livestock, so I would say it's a machine shed at Andrew Jackson Care. And that's probably where the equipment is being stored, so it says contents insured for.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, so the secondary roads have.
Here's, here's what's going on there. If you look up and down the contents on your list, there's a lot of one thousand dollars. It's a little bit of a it's a workaround, I'm going to call it a workaround. If you have a thousand dollars of contents at a location, it brings a whole blanket number of contents into play. So, because the property is all on a blanket. So if we had a, if we got seven million on the courthouse, it gets destroyed by tornado and it costs eight million to rebuild, we're going to pay eight million. Because the blanket is like sixteen mil. It's going to pay under the blanket, there's no real limits, we just blend all this into one pot, so to speak, for a total. If we have zero contents, then we don't have any contents coverage there at all. But if we have a thousand dollars of contents, we have the whole blanket behind us to pay a final cost.
The only reason, question that got brought up here a while back and we're discussing, well, we passed a member of the league this morning, so secondary roads have equipment there and still in the winter time.
Okay.
Yeah, a fair amount of value. Like bulldozer.
Equipment already put in there.
Bulldozers, bat mowers, bat wing mowers.
And that stuff's all specifically, that's.
Itemized.
Itemized out.
Okay.
But let's say they put block of the bolts in there, I'm just trying to come up with something. That would be covered.
So if there's still any other material.
Yeah, non-scheduled materials for items. The interesting thing is they lowered the maintenance shop.
Down here, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, they want to do some repairs to that. We would.
Yeah.
Well, it's not big enough and the doors aren't big enough.
They want to tear part of it down and rebuild that part.
If they post something in there, then it's like you can't even walk around it. It's too close to front and back.
It's got longer.
They're spread around with the plow in the front, it's like. Hit the wall that pulls it or.
We got to come up with a different name for the Operation New View building because it isn't Operation New View anymore. It doesn't exist.
What's the address?
I believe it's nine eleven Black Street. Or Cory.
Cory Street.
Cory Street.
Pretty much.
I guess it says nine oh four here. We were trying to figure out what the address would be for the no, for the Together We Build building, to figure out what that would be, so I looked up Operation New View.
That was about two more blocks down, probably eleven hundred.
Yeah.
Pearson's twelve twelve East Court.
Yeah.
And if you find an address for the second building, the senior center, let me know, because that's been an ongoing battle.
Okay. Well, the city should certainly be able to tell you what their number is.
What do you think?
I think we know that though, because we usually have to use the address for both.
Nine oh six? I never was given a definitive answer by anyone.
Just just a clarification, number thirty-seven, the electronic data processing for the E-nine-eleven commission. So that's, what is that?
That's all the nine-one-one equipment.
But then nine-one-one.
Police, the basement of the police station.
Why, it's in the city building.
Nine-one-one's equipment, nine-one-one's part of the county.
Isn't, doesn't nine-one-one pay that back?
We do, I give a, I produce a bill for them. True.
So they pay that portion of the insurance.
Within the last two years, we had a complete inventory remake of what is all there.
I see.
You know, when the tower went down, Lamont and what's all on it and.
I guess that was my other question, is all of our repeater towers and such.
Brand new inventory, should be all brand new.
And that's part of the E-nine-eleven commission is all the towers and such.
Generators, there's a couple of generators involved.
Okay.
Bob Lane does a really good, very specific job in all that equipment.
Okay.
We have it, it's listed as unscheduled now, ICAP made a change on that a couple of years ago, how they approached it, instead of us trying to chase it down individually.
Yeah.
So that, that actually looks to your benefit, but that's what that is, yeah.
Yeah, just making sure, making sure we're covered.
Yeah, it's.
And that comes into play a couple of times, we had, like, we tried to get a tower and we had the water tower and then we had Lamont thing and we had another repeater somewhere that was maybe water damage, I don't remember.
We, we had one in St. Denis, we didn't, never been told about.
Yeah.
And when we paid that, it sort of became Lamont.
Yeah.
Nobody bought it, we got it taken care of. And then, to be honest, they wouldn't have, have a problem with that. There's some fights, you don't look for it.
I guess, I'm guessing there's very little negotiation.
Um, a couple of things. And Lisa and I have talked about this is, and I haven't completely, I just heard about the crush thing or.
Corrosion.
Corrosion, yeah, corruption is bad, sorry. And that seems like it's more geared toward HIPAA and, and personnel issues.
Cybersecurity, phishing.
That's a good thing. Lisa and I talked about what's available with ICAP, you contact ICAP about what's available. Lisa and I talked about what's available with ICAP, you contact ICAP about what's available. The downstroke is. A lot of it's initiated within the county, so we have to have somebody organizing that and getting it going. We've done safety committees before, it's hard to keep them moving. Just a bit of advice, if we do a safety committee. Do not put your department heads on it. Because honest to God, they don't really know what's going on out there.
So if I'm correctly saying, that's I believe, I know we talked about this when we had our interim engineer here about safety training in secondary roads. So I believe since then, if I remember right, they have hired a safety trainer that goes around counties and does that, she'll produce your work for.
Well, we're, we've got a proposal and we need to make a decision on, and that's what I was talking to Chris about, is if we do this, then do we get that?
Yeah, that's, that's right, a different mod, moderation factor, whatever you call it.
I need to get the information, you need to talk to ICAP about that.
Or even David, yeah, David might know what.
I've got, when you talked to me today, I had my, my sheet of what they were proposing. I thought if we could offset on the insurance side, if we did, if we did this training, if we could get some offset on the insurance, that's the angle that I was looking for.
Sure.
So when Chris and I talked, I was kind of reading my printout, so I can get with you again and we'll talk about it.
I need a copy of that and offset it into them.
Yep.
They do provide a lot of things, because the whole concept behind ICAP is to reduce losses by loss control and training. And keep your out go low.
Yeah, I agree to what you said, department heads. I mean, you can have a lead out here on secondary roads, gonna try to train the department, that necessarily doesn't work at all. So if you have an outsider come in and knows the rules and regulations, and she does this, what's all you?
I tell you, when we put our safety committee together years ago, the second one, or, or fifth, or whatever it was. Randy Teason came in. And he is there every day working, he was excellent. He knew exactly what they were doing wrong. And what they needed to do to fix it. And it was a little bit staggering, and we got some of the stuff fixed, ran into, you know, a few roadblocks. Goofy little turf battle kind of things. But he really knew what was going on, as compared to the engineer, who's got an overall view of things. And is it out there on?
Well, we talked about that, I mean, we talked about hands on, more hands on.
Yeah.
Getting out on the job site and talk to your guys and be involved.
I may have told you this story before, I hate, I apologize, I'd better repeat myself. But one county, they put together a safety committee, they had a couple ladies from courthouse offices on it. They were gonna go out and watch them build the bridge, and they said, why are we going out there, we don't know anything about it. Well, you're gonna go anyway, because you don't know anything about it, that's the whole concept. And they're building this bridge. And one of the ladies asked, why do they block down the beams and put the wooden?
Oh, the plank.
Plank, why did they put that plank on the far side and then work backwards? They put the plank down here and then kneel on it. And build forward instead of building back. And it's one of those things, and we've all been there. This is how I was trained to do it, that's how I do it. You don't ever get outside the box or anything. Here's this lady that didn't know anything, she saw something that was brutally obvious, but that's just always the way.
The second part of that would be, where are those planks coming from?
The whole of the other side.
Well, if they're coming from, if they're bringing them up on the planks that have already been laid, then they don't want to have planks going over their head and come down.
I have no idea, I'm not getting into the detail of it.
But I understand what you're saying, there's, it's just somebody that. Makes more sense to be on a big platform, I mean, when we're building floor decking, we don't walk on the floor joists, we stand on the plywood.
Yeah, you build it that way. I just use that story as an example of an out of the box look at.
I guess the one thing Chris and I talked about is, you know, since ICAP was trying to put more money into training and, and et cetera. What I talked to Chris is, what does that mean to Jackson County? So.
So maybe we'll get some of those training down. Yeah, either that or there's the underlying factor, there's a lot of determining factor.
Nobody's discussed it with me, and I haven't. About how they're handling that, so.
Yeah, so if it's going for, if, if this training is all going for administration, that's all good.
Right, that's right.
Just saying.
They're usually pretty decent about that, my guess is, and I've got to talk to them, they're gonna get people out here and talk to our people. Our number one problem, it's not a problem area, but we're gonna have claims first through secondary roads. Then the sheriff's department claims are deer hits, practically animal hits.
Yeah.
That's the bulk of theirs. The large claim we had this year, this past year. It was. That was just either the wrong place at the wrong time.
Yeah.
The guy didn't do anything, even remotely incorrect. But. And I don't know how that went so far south in such a quick time. That's how it happened.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
I appreciate it. If there's anything else, you get it from me.
There was one I saw next to the training room at the turbid center, the gazebo. Okay, you got it down, I think for twenty-eight thousand, which I think is what I built it for. There's no way you would replace that for that now, not with lumber prices, this is all cedar.
Okay.
And I don't know if that blanket thing would come to that.
It would come into play on that, because it's a listed structure.
Sure. I could see that being double.
Just because of. It, it's impossible to keep up with. There's normal inflation in the, in this area, duration has put a tremendous strain on material cost.
All over.
I know.
Eric Taylor in Florida said they can't get lumber.
Yeah, a nine foot stud, which is about the height of this ceiling, is twenty bucks. And you used to get a full two by twelve, you know, just that long for that kind of money, and that's just, it's crazy.
We're trying to replace green ones.
A lot of those down here.
Yeah.
And they're coming, it's coming around, they ramped up there. Manufacturer. It's still, still problematic.
And he's put his whole housing development thing on hold, because it doesn't cash flow, I mean, you can't, you can't make it work.
Do they expect those to come down with demand?
Possibly, I suggest an alternative construction, which would be masonry or ICF forms, insulated concrete forms, using those for your walls and ceilings and stuff. Because concrete hasn't, I mean, it's gone up some, but nothing like the lumber part of it. And that also includes your insulation, so. Some whole new concept, I mean, there's some doing it, but not that many.
Hey, what's your pleasure on the insurance renewal?
Taking action today.
Set up to do that.
Okay, I would make motion to renew the insurance policy or present it.
Motion and second to approve the renewal coverage for our Jackson County. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I have these things on, you guys sign. One quick thing. I came in here this fall, or this, right after the ratio, it was hot in.
It was for. They got it fixed, yeah.
I just wanted to let you know, we paid for that.
Yes.
We don't even want to talk about how many days it was happening.
That I can't help. But it was hot.
Yes, it was, we agree, we were here too.
But nobody, nobody called about that, it was a couple weeks in, likely.
Well, they weren't sure what happened.
Yeah.
And that was the key, I mean, they didn't figure out.
It turned out to be, we have, we have equipment breakdown on the coverage. That's where we paid that under, not under wind or lightning or duration, it was just mechanical breakdown.
Chris and I have been talking quite a bit lately, we're, I'm getting schooled on insurance and.
Chris doesn't like to talk.
Well, anyway, I mean, long story short is, we're working together, we're trying to work through a couple of issues.
They've got five outstanding claims right now.
Yeah.
Which are remotely inconsequential. Not to worry, but just to take a second, we're also working on a thing, we're, we're using a Google document. Where the incident reports that have been paper filed and coming to Luann, and we're trying to take some of that pressure off of Luann by, if we do a Google doc. Where we all can look at it, all the, the critical department heads, or department people, which would be Stacy in secondary roads, Pam at conservation. Karen, Sheriff's Department, Luann, Lisa, and my staff. And you can see when somebody's typing in that. So we can do the incident reports online and it sends an email out, I know I've been getting goo goo emails. Telling you something's been changed, so you know if you'll carry it. Because we've. It's a good program, how we started out, but it's not been super successful. I know more than I used to, I used to get blindsided all the time.
We're trying.
No, it's, I think that'll work if we.
I think we're trying.
So, by the way, this is the better communication model than we have.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Lynn, we're gonna let you come in before Lisa.
I will, you. Well, thank you, Lisa.
Something like go up back to all that snow.
Now, we get her in.
We don't want you to fall.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that's the case. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here for the monthly follow up to the governing board meeting yesterday, but I guess in addition to that, Jack, I didn't really talk to you, but we probably need to talk about budget just a little bit.
Yeah.
So just.
I did tell, I did tell Lisa what David recommended yesterday.
Yeah, yes.
So she would have a heads up, because we can always alter it at the public hearing.
Yeah.
But I said, to say we were supposed to, to levy at the max, the thirty seventy-eight, and then we'll see. How we progress from there.
So. Yeah, yeah, and I think at this point, that's where we need to start, because we have fallen behind in our conversations within the region about budgeting and. What we're looking at needing to do, or what we're going to do with our fund balances, and so counties obviously need, and you saw yesterday, Jack, maybe in that chat, that Muscatine County. They except, it looks like they're polishing a budget next week maybe, so they had to make that decision even prior to any conversation with the region, so. So I guess I'll just start there, then with David's report yesterday. He does a, a projection every month for where he anticipates both the counties and the region will end at the end of fiscal year. With their fund balance, and just to remind everybody, the significance to the fund balance is. The Iowa law that says that by six thirty of twenty twenty-two, so fiscal year twenty-two. Within the regions, both the region itself's fund balance and the individual counties within the regions, or their fund balance is at or below forty percent. So. I think this is the second year he's been doing this projection out during fiscal year on a monthly basis. According to his projections, if Jackson County continues to have expenditures at the rate we have. On six thirty of twenty-one, at the end of this fiscal year, we'd have a fund balance of eighty-seven percent, basically. Now, his projection figure that he's using is just a little bit below where our expenditures have been. And just to make the board aware, currently as of December thirtieth of twenty twenty, so the middle of this fiscal year. We were right at about fifty percent with our county budget and expenditures. That's somewhat atypical for us, but I think the reason that is, is if you remember, every month now, you see a claim across your desk for twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand, twenty-seven dollars. We're making monthly installments to the region's fiscal agent fund. And this is the first year that we have done that, use that process. So just by virtue of that one expense every month, we're spending twenty thousand every month that historically we might have made one month's payment to the region's fiscal agent for maybe two. So that's kind of where Jackson County is at, as we look ahead to the end of this fiscal year. Currently, his projection for the region's fiscal agent is to be about five point one million dollars, or about forty-eight percent at the end of this fiscal year, six thirty of twenty-one, so. Those are kind of the figures that we're all needing to be aware of as we talk about. What expenditures do we have, what expenditures do we need to begin incurring, and what are we gonna do about our fund balance? Now, one of ISAC's legislative priorities is to ask the legislators to consider. Either postponing that six thirty twenty-two forty percent requirement. Or I think Lori's preference would be they just took it away. But at a minimum, I think the hope is that the legislators will take a look at it and give the regions a couple more years. Regions are still.
We talked about this so many times, I'm sorry, but you know, it, it's one of them things that you have a balance. We can't go out and start a program and initiate it and not fund it later on, you know, it's gotta be sustainable.
That's one of, that's one of the big problems.
Money, just to spend money, no. I mean, when you're telling me that Jackson County is gonna be at eighty-seven percent, and we're still gonna levy the max, is that the case?
Well. That's what our suggestion was yesterday, is that we max at the levy, and then. The management team is going to be looking at some proposals or some, making some recommendations to the board. But also, we have to, we have to remember, two point eight million dollars of the mon, money that we have was the CARES fund. And we gave out two million four hundred, and anyway, there's three hundred ninety-one million in some, or three hundred ninety-one thousand plus. That's left in that CARES fund, so we are going to send out another application to the providers. To see if there's additional needs that they have, because we were originally supposed to send that back July, or December thirty-first. Now we can have it, keep it until June thirtieth of this year. Yeah, so we have an opportunity to, to use some of those funds.
Right, so that money, that five point one million that I talked about, includes the two point eight million that we got in CARES act dollars, which. Will either be all expensed out by giving it as awards to providers, or whomever applies for it, or will need to be returned to the state. So at the end of the year, that will be zero balance. As Jack mentioned, there's three hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars of that two point million, two plus million remaining. To date, nineteen schools and twenty-six providers within the five county region have requested and been awarded money from that, so. I think the governing board, and rightly so, is feeling a sense of satisfaction that at least it did help a number of different entities. And those entities not only had to apply for the use of that money, but in order to get reimbursed, because it was available to them on a reimbursement basis. They didn't provide the necessary documentation that met the criteria for which the money could be used. So the money, I feel, has been scrutinized close enough in terms of how it was expended, that if it were audited, I don't anticipate there should be any concerns.
Shouldn't be.
A lot of time and consideration given to what money is to award based on application. And then when the bills came into Lori, she looked them over closely to make sure they adhered to what they were awarded for and adhered to requirements for use of the money, so.
But another thing that we have to consider is. July first of this, this fiscal year, we were supposed to have a children's coordinator on board and providing some additional services with more. With more to be, supposed to be up and running by July first of twenty-one and of twenty-two, twenty-two year. Anyway, we haven't done that, so those are some of the things that the management team is going to be considering.
It's just. Legislation is on the table again, and what's gonna happen there in the next six months and in the next year, how do you know? How do you know? Legislation is on the table again and what's going to happen there in the next six months and in the next year? How do you know?
Well, our big problem is the legislation. The legislators, they keep doing things and.
And Harry's saying is like, we're just doing the easy stuff now. We'll save that for next year. I'm like, there we go.
No.
No, it needs to be done.
Like to say there, no. Yeah, it sounds like it's probably the same schedule they always use. They do the easy stuff first. You guys have to certify the budget and then they come through at the very end of the session and do the stuff that really impacts the budgeting for the county. You know, we have, and to add to the complexity of the situation is we don't have money with our current levy rate of thirty seventy-eight to add additional services. Yet we have all this money in fund balance. And so if we go and say we don't have money to start the services, that makes us look somewhat foolish because we are sitting with money in the bank, so to speak. I think, you know, the more I think about this and and all this budgeting and stuff is so complicated that I've only learned it through the last fifteen years I've been here, but and still feel as I know how we're old, I almost think we may have to take the risk and hire this position that we need. And we're seeing the need for the positions as well. It's not just that we're being told in law that yes, you have. You know, I took a call the other day from an AEA person who's working with the students in the school system and wants to know about what services are out there and, and this children's coordinator person in the position is the one that's really going to have the expertise in that area. I understand the skeleton of the system, but it's not a system that I've worked in as directly as I had in the adult system. And, and that's five counties over. I mean, every other county has had similar phone calls and requests to their office. I almost think for the point where we've got this money in the bank, we're going to have to commit to this position. This is one position we don't want to start and then have to stop in two fiscal years. But if we get to the point where there isn't money in two fiscal years, given our budget as it is, then we may have to look at where we're spending money in other areas to preserve this children's coordinator position. I don't know. I just, I see it as an important.
Well, the study's shown that there's a need, definitely a need and they.
Yeah.
I would say we really need to go forward with it.
And well, I think everybody on the board, governing board believes that too. But another reason for this large amount of money that's there is I don't think there's a provider that's been able to provide the services that they plan to this year because of the COVID. People are not going in. They're doing more tele, tele psychiatry, tele medicine.
And if anything does clear up, are you going to have a complete overload?
Well, there is some concern about that, that once things break and people are out and about, if people come back out into their lifestyles, they will have residual effects of having been isolated for so long and been alone. On what will be the impact to the providers in terms of the demand for their services?
Cause you know, it affects everybody. It affects us. You know, but I, as I said yesterday, I, I, I think I'm somewhat normal, but still, I mean, there is stress.
When there is a tension rises and it's, yeah, it's just there.
Right. Yeah.
It's some, some cover up better than others, but.
Right. Right. But eventually for many people, it does bubble to the surface.
When, yeah, when is the breaking point?
Yeah.
I mean, even, even when you see that the gun sales are like four or five hundred percent higher than what they've been. I mean, that's scarier now.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Cause you know, a lot of such home situations, you don't need laying around somewhere.
Right.
Well, just like yesterday, a mother killed her seven-year-old son. Shot him, you know, went down in the Quad Cities and you know, you wonder what, what happened.
How do you get there? Yeah. That's crazy.
Well, another complicating point of all of this and a little bit out of our world, but not certainly not completely is the increase in substance uses as well. You know, and a wide variety. I mean, I'm not looking at any of them in particular, but we are not as a system put to handle the residual effects of the increasing substance uses. And what role does that play in some of the behaviors that people are exhibiting? So. So that is kind of where the dilemma is for the budgeting right now is I had submitted a budget to you. I don't know if you wanted to schedule a time here shortly to come in and just go over it, or it was submitted on this premise and that is that I levied to the max to determine the approximate revenue that we could anticipate. And then I budgeted that amount of revenue. The items within the county budget are not any different than what they typically have them. So there's really not much change. So if you were to look at it, I mean, there may be a couple of things I have, I should have refreshed my memory this morning. I did it, you know, a month or two ago. There might be a couple of areas that I would have commented on, but it's nothing real of any significant nature. So I don't know if you'd like to have me go over that with you at some point shortly, or if you want to wait till we get a little further into the region discussions.
Isn't that the nineteenth that the, the region's going to do?
February, I think is the first one. I think Lori sent another invite out this morning. So I think there's three Fridays in a row now in February.
Okay.
The twelfth, the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, I guess it would be.
Cause originally that's what you had said, that we should maybe wait till after the, the region set their budget so we could, but it's getting to the point where we're going to have to do something.
I just don't, can't see where there's going to be a lot of change. Like you said, there's going to be, that's the recommendation and we probably need to follow somebody's advice and have it there anyway if needed. And I'm sure that they're going to work with extending this deadline for the forty percent, I would hope.
Okay. And it was, it was, you're going to be gone Friday. What, what did we talk about tomorrow?
Brent was not available.
He wasn't available, but we still have others that we need to look at, right?
Yep. Who? Do we have Brent?
I think we were just going to go through our books, the rest of our.
Decide if you're going to do any cutting within the departments.
Yeah.
You know, I'm weather permitting on Friday, but I will be going all day.
Sure, sure.
Tomorrow, Thursday morning, I'm going, just Thursday morning, I'll leave here about nine thirty and I should be back hopefully by, by noon. If you have a stand by meeting.
One to three thirty. Yep.
Well, I mean, we certainly can meet after that if you want. After three thirty on Thursday.
Well, do you want to just come over Thursday at three thirty for your budget? Is that, would that work for you?
Yeah. And like I said, it probably won't take her long because it really is so routine. Three thirty Thursday. Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll be here anyway, so.
Yeah.
Even when we're finished here, we have budget work sizes scheduled today yet, but I don't know what time Brent won't be in until, do we have a lapse in time there or? You know what I mean?
Well, it depends on whether John gets here.
Well, yeah, but he's meeting with Brent and I guess if each one of us have a question or something where we are scheduled to go down and talk to him if we want to, but.
Well, he was going to come here when he got done with them, I think. That's what I was.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't understand that part of it.
Doesn't matter. I mean, whatever works for you guys.
I don't care.
I mean, I know, I think I'd probably go grab my notes and be.
Are you going to be available in the next hour, hour and a half?
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
We could. And stuff we got and decide where we're at if it's.
Want us to just call you when we're ready?
Sure.
We can do that.
Yeah. We could be, we could be available here in twenty minutes.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I'll go back to my office and grab my notes. And like I said, I don't, my notes even say a whole lot, you know? And I put some in with what I submitted to Shelley and so we'll just kind of go over those.
That'll be fine.
I just have a couple of, or one other thing I guess in particular, and that is I, Jack yesterday asked, he was just interested in knowing what the impact was when sheltered work closed. What happened to the consumers that were involved in that program? And did that mean that their work, work career, if you so to speak, ended or where did they go? So I had a chance to reach out to imagine the possibilities yesterday at the end of the day. I didn't ask for how many people were actually left in that program. I can tell you I was paying for about fifteen people when that funding ended. And Rob and Nan said, told me that there were only three of, of the left remaining people in that program that are not involved in some kind of vocational work. One decided to retire. One went to a day have the location socialization type service right away. And the other one decided to participate in that kind of program, I mean, not too long ago. So they were able to identify some more employment opportunities in the community. And they also were able to create one more group of individuals with disabilities that goes out to work in places of employment that are integrated. So it is still in a, in the community around individuals without disabilities. So that, I thought that was real encouraging to hear.
Yes.
And just a side note, they continue even with COVID vocationally, they have some good things going on. They're ramping up their involvement with the local business to engage more people with disabilities. And then their selling project is continuing to move forward. And they're hoping to go online with some sales and things like that. So in spite of the COVID thing, they continue moving their business model forward with some of those things. So I thought that was.
That's great.
Good.
Otherwise, that was about it from yesterday, I would say. So yeah, I will just go back to my office and have a line call when you guys are ready.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, I guess now we're ready for you, Lisa.
I'll make mine short and sweet. This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Board proceedings as written by Honorable Dr. Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of January nineteenth. All those in favor? Hi, motion carried.
Motion needed to renew a class C liquor license without our service and Sunday sales to the Macochona Country Club at seventeen nine sixty-one thirty-third street in Macochona effective March sixth, twenty twenty-one to March fifth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the Macochona Country Club's liquor, class C liquor license. All those in favor? Post, motion carried.
This next item is kind of a last cleanup thing that we need to do from the previous zoning administrator. Not, I guess, giving this to our new zoning administrator. So this morning I need a motion to approve resolution number seven hundred and eighty-nine dash zero one dash twenty-six dash twenty twenty-one to approve the final plat of Keneath Place in section twenty-five of Tatum Moore Township as recorded in book four, page three twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
The motion in a second. All those in favor? Hi, motion carried.
And that's really all that I have for the board today.
You are short and sweet.
I kept her short. Yeah.
Okay, next we have Lou and Gokee, our executive assistant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is still morning, you think? It's been a long morning. Okay, calendar for this week. At noon today, I put on the schedule a budget work session, which it sounds like we're absolutely going to need. At three o'clock this afternoon is a Mr. Developmental Workforce CEO meeting by Zoom for Jack. And the Macochona River Watership Management Authority's annual meeting is this afternoon by Zoom and is at four o'clock. May have had it on a different time earlier, but it's going to be at four o'clock. And that's for anyone who wants to go. Wednesday, January twenty-seventh at three P M is an ISAC's meeting for Larry by Zoom. Thursday, January twenty-eighth at nine A M is a regional funding affiliation meeting by Zoom for Jack and Larry. From one to three thirty P M is the ISAC statewide supervisors meeting by Zoom, and that's also for all of you. At six thirty P M Thursday night is the Macochona Cave State Park Interpretation Plan Meeting by Zoom. That is for all of you that is open to the public as well. Friday, January twenty-ninth at seven A M is a Macochona Leadership Team meeting for Larry. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, February second at nine A M. And that evening at six o'clock is the Conference Board Budget Public Hearing by Zoom. And that's also for all of you. In terms of business today, I have appointments. The first appointments I want to look at are the eminent domain commission. And we have two members of the eminent domain commission that are resigning. Richard Scrissett, after twenty years of service, is, we are accepting his resignation with regret. And also that of John Kettman, after nine years of service. Need to accept those following.
I would make a motion to accept the resignations.
One motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion carried.
I am also looking to replace Richard Scrissett's position. I have an application for that from Mark Myler. I'm from Flint and National Bank. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint Mark Myler to the eminent domain commission for twenty twenty-one.
So moved. Second, it looks like an excellent candidate.
It's always good to have him in that, in that category.
Yeah. You got a lot of background in, you know, the banking business, farming business.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
All right. And also for the Jackson County Board of Health, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Are we still short one then on the eminent domain commission?
According to Terry, I don't think so.
Well, John sold his farm, so he couldn't be on the farm category any longer.
But we still have six categories. So I think that is all required to have. You can have seven. I don't think we have to.
Looks like we still have seven of them.
There's still seven there.
Yeah.
Did I leave his name on there? No. Okay. So maybe that was. And we were discussing with one other one, we're going to, they were going to stay on. So if they decided to need him to stay.
Sure. So we don't need to look for somebody.
All right. So we're good there. Next is the Board of Health. We also have a resignation on that board from Dr. Darwin Shipper. We are accepting his resignation also with regrets after twelve years of service on that board.
I would move to accept the resignation. Again, with all these resignations, would we be sending a thank you letter out?
I have certificates.
I do.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the resignation with regret of Dr. Darwin Shepherd. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
I do have an application to replace Dr. Shipper on the Board of Health, and that is from Dr. Christian Becker. So I'm looking for motion to appoint Dr. Becker to the Board of Health.
So second, and again, I want to add that very good candidate.
Oh, absolutely.
With a lot of credentials and again, lucky and happy and willing to serve.
Amen. Okay, we have a motion in a second to appoint Christian Becker to the health board. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
One other appointment, Doug Latham's term is up. And I'm looking to reappoint him to a new three-year term on the Board of Health.
So moved.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
Everything I had for you today.
Thanks. Okay.
Okay, we have boards and commissions. Anybody got anything to report?
I guess I'd like to see if, if David is still available for a second. We had our quarterly, under other meetings, we had our quarterly meeting with Alex and Buchanan County Engineers last Tuesday. And I'd like to have David either report or I've got a couple of notes written down here.
You want to do David first or Lisa?
Oh, Lisa never went yet. I'm sorry.
No, I went.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm done.
She was short and sweet, remember?
I got right.
Yeah.
I got right. The board would like to see you come back over for several minutes. All right, thanks.
I'm calling me.
Yeah. I can hear you. No, I apologize, David. I didn't want to, I forgot to, in your portion here, I told the.
I forgot to, in your portion here, I told the rest of the members here that we had a meeting between yourself and Mike Clausen and the Buchanan County Engineers.
Yes, yes, yes.
And on the Court of Porton. Maybe just if you want to give your recall of what we had, I got a couple of notes thrown down, and I'll just add to it if we need to go anywhere. Or I can kind of go over my notes, and maybe you can add.
Do that, and I will refresh my memory.
Okay, so we talked, we had a meeting, it was a very good meeting, by the way. Brian was there, Alex was there, supervisor from Buchanan County, I was there, Mike was there, and David was there. And all in all, Alex and Brian are very happy with the way things are going for Buchanan County. He said, I'd like to have a little more of his time maybe sometime, but it's working out very well for them. We talked about the hours.
Overtime.
Quarterly hours average out to, our portion of the forty percent average out to about two hundred and eighty hours a quarter. And the very first quarter, I mean, Mike had questioned, we didn't have but a hundred and thirty hours or so. And he said, well, that was a time when they were very busy, of course, and Alex going to get down here. Now, the second quarter, he had over three hundred hours with design work and other things, so it's balancing out. We looked over the agreement, twenty-eighty agreement, and of course, it says in that twenty-eighty agreement that it would be adjusted in the fourth quarter, his hours. We talked about some overtime issue, maybe? And that, it's all come up that he was working on the Conservation Bridge at that time when he was over here. And we, and we had a lengthy discussion back and forth that said, it's going to be very important, important for Alex to allocate his time and manage his time, so. There's not a lot of overtime that's needed to be paid out, and he's perfectly clear with that, and you know, I mean, sometimes it's just a time travel thing, so he gets down here at at X amount of time, but if he can't get here till two o'clock in the afternoon, while he's got a couple of hours, he goes back. You know, maybe it's a thing that he waits till the next day and has a full day here. So it's just an allocation, so it was good conversation, and it went really well. We talked a little bit about, he's going to do, he's going to have much more time here in the very spring, or even now already, I don't know, inspecting our bridges. So we're going to start on that, and we talked a little bit about some of our high trust residents, about equipment that may be available. And there's some good possibilities for that, either through the state or through Buchanan County. Or at least a boom truck that they have, so that sounded good, too, so. Um, that's the short of it, I think.
You're better known to me.
Well, I think, they were, I had to go through to see if I could read them, but that was.
We had a conversation with, through Conservation again about the trail, and I think it came, you brought it up, that you'd rather have the trail come out at the intersection instead of where we had.
It was a good meeting. I touched base with Alex, got to meet his, his boss and the supervisor and things. And as part of that discussion, we touched on the crossing of the multi-use path. And then the next day, he sent us a copy, which we got to take a look at and make some comments on. And he was able to make some adjustments, and he was going to take them back to the conservation folks to see if they were acceptable to them. So that's what you're building on. So I thought that was a good outcome and things, and bridge inspection.
So I guess my taking from the meeting went well. I think everybody's pretty satisfied that they had them. I think Mike brought up one of the bridge designs that had the discrepancy, and that was like his engineers said, it's minor things, but he did work out and want a better understanding, and.
That'll happen.
Yeah, so all in all, I think it went well.
Good.
Yeah.
Good, good.
He's, he's having, I'm excited and really.
The trick will be the inspection and getting that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I guess, again, with that said, we, I mean, we were, we talked about it even when Todd was here, so they're reclassifying some of these bridges, as I understand it.
They went from, from structuring deficient and functionally obsolete to the feds did this, required the state to make the changes to more fair, good, fair, poor.
Yeah.
And because they did that, some of the structures that we have don't fall into that poor category. They're close, but not quite so. We lost some money.
So there's a fine line of how we classify and going.
Too, so it may be a little bit different type of inspection or paperwork that Alex has to do. But both sides are aware, but so we kind of work together with him. Touch base with Todd to see how he's coming with it, but what his changes may be, but Todd was one of the counties that came out, yeah.
Well, that's great.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Was this a one-year contract?
It was a one-year contract, so it comes to do, we are discussing in the fourth quarter. On the way the contract reads, I just put it away, but it reads that if there's any changes to be made, then we discuss it and decide what to do next year. And again, the, the percentages or hours will be adjusted in the fourth quarter, I think, that Alex read. And I guess I didn't know this, you probably did, but the, the a lot of the dealing we had when we dealt with Alex was with the county auditor up there, and she since is retired.
Re-election. Yeah.
So.
They have a new auditor.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it was, it was a good meeting, but well.
Okay.
Put you on the spot there.
No, that's okay.
I forgot that we talked about it when we.
No, no.
Give a report to these guys anyway.
Well, there's a couple other things. We've got a, a letter from Jane from Haycap that they've scheduled a meeting for the twenty-eight E partners for the twenty-ninth of January at nine thirty in the morning to discuss what the debt is from Operation New View. Which I'm glad, I, I, I talked to Carrie from Dubuque and asked her if she had heard anything from the city's portion of the debt, if she talked to Jane, and she said that Laura had said a few things about it, they were working on it. I says, well, the end of the fiscal year was October, I said, do they not have the audit yet? And she said she didn't know, but she says I'll contact Laura and see what we can come up with, because I said, we do have some funds in our budget this year. But I says, I really, I'm really not too excited about putting funds in for next year. I want to know what that debt is so that we can get it done in this fiscal year. So I guess that's what prompted this, this letter, so we will have that meeting to discuss that. Also, I talked to Jeff in Delaware and Buchanan County. He said, we can come, or Delaware County, we can come whenever we want to. They're doing some finishing touches on the jail. Yep, probably will be opening the middle of February, middle to end of February. He said, the one thing that they decided to do differently is they did end up putting in a full kitchen.
So they should have numbers for that or.
And he told me that they were contracting with someone. He didn't say who they were, he says, I can't remember for sure what, he says, but they will be hired to, to come in to the jail and prepare the food.
Just like we've seen down.
Yes, so he said he would get the figures for us when he had them so that we could discuss that and see what our desires were. But, you know, it's like we said.
You know, I'd sure like to ride up there and see that before it's open, you know, I mean, we.
And that's what we said, we, I told him, we, we want to be able to walk into the cells, we wanted to be able, we want to be able to see, and he told me that we should tell John, when we are discussing things with John, that we would like to have Jeremy, the onsite guy. He said he is absolutely wonderful.
But he's the construction manager's inspector.
Yeah. And he says, see if you can't get Jeremy, because he says he was so easy to work with, and he said, if you don't get Jeremy, he says, it'll probably be okay, but he says, he, he was just wonderful for them to work with. So I said, well, I wrote his name down, I said, when we see John, we'll tell him. We'd like Jeremy to be here when we do the jail.
So, yes, we had talked about that, too, when we go tour, that I know when we had met with Brent and Jim and I and Jack, went through the Farm Bureau meeting, and there was some interest from a few of them members that would like to tour it also. So, I mean, if, because, because the facility's not open, that's probably possible for them to.
Yeah, probably would be.
So I guess if we just come up with a date, we can kind of pass that on if there's somebody wants to go with.
He said, he told me this week was pretty busy because they were working on budgets. But he said, probably after next week or the middle of next week, if we want to choose a time to come up, just let him know, and he'll try to, try to work it out so it's convenient for us, so.
Want to look at something, so you're not, you're not here Friday, and you'd like to go to.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Well, I'm, I'm, it would probably, it would probably be the twenty-ninth, it wouldn't be this Friday.
Yeah.
Or the.
This is.
Yeah, that is, it'd probably be the next Friday, I would think. Yeah. So I will talk to him when we decide for sure what day we'd like to go and see if that works for him. Linestone Bluffs R C and D, they're, they did hire an intern for this, for this semester, and we're excited about that.
For the last half of this year, or are we talking start of?
He started in January.
Oh, okay.
And he'll go through this semester at schools at Augustana.
Are you stretching?
I'm stretching. Can't make my way to the candy bar.
So is there anything else to come before our meeting today?
So we can, we can probably adjourn and then do the work session.
Yeah, we're going to have some work sessions on budget and possibly.
Oh, unfinished business, Jack. I did see an invoice come in yesterday, correct, on the five-year sprinkler test inspection at Nanda Jackson. And we got an invoice, so that's why I asked him, can we see the report? And I believe he sent the report, but it was very short.
Yeah.
So at least we're, we are in compliant there, and I think there was.
And you might have noticed when you came in today, the box on the copying machine, those are the extra brochures that we got. I called Marla yesterday to talk to her to see about the rest of them, and she said they are at the company being labeled. And we had talked about, I or somebody would take them to Cedar Rapids, and she said, well, do you want to do that? And I said, so depends on how much snow we get, whether I want to drive to Cedar Rapids in this weather. So she is to notify me when they're done. And she said, if we choose that we're going to take them, fine, otherwise, I said, if it's not a convenient time, we'll just have them ship them.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
But she said, in our, I got an email from her today, and it said that they hope to have them out by the week of the fifth.
Next week.
Yep.
Good.
So.
Okay, I don't have anything else, yeah. I would make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
All right.
Hi, most meetings adjourned.